Good evening, everyone.
Good.
Good to have a nice crowd. We haven't had a big crowd in some of our... But we have a lot of tourists covering tonight, so we'll ask everybody to speak and be appropriately, respective of everybody as they'd like to come to the stadium or whatever. If they'd please arrive, because we have an invitation. So, you're welcome, okay?
Okay. Goodness, Father, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights as we are presented, as we review what's being presented tonight. We welcome your presence among us in your son's name with prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your development, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I now call for the reading and approval of the previous minutes.
This could be September's minutes?
Motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes since we had a friendly copy of the statement as presented. Second. Further discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We're getting the first order of business. We have one old business left over. I guess it was left over from last but...
Yes.
Yep. We didn't have a court. I apologize for not being here. I had another exchangement with the doctors down in the area. I just can't get there. It's been empty. So, anyway, Charles, I'll go first.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission. Before I get going with the cases, which I can read the following. I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and the video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information be made part of the record and shall be available for the board commissioners' review. Also, all future developments shall comply with all applicable codes to ensure that all residential structures on the property meet safety regulations to protect the health and welfare of surrounding residents. We have one case in our old business. The case is referenced as RZ-191024. The applicant is Howard Valamont. The subject property's location is 494 Hill City Road. The request is to rezone property from AG to RR, agricultural to rural residential. And it's for 1.5 acres of an 8.27 acre tract. The parcel is identified as 040081. The intent is to create a 1.5 acre tract and to combine the remaining 6.77 acres with the neighboring tract. This site is located within the rural residential character area, which promotes low intensity, single-family residential development. The proposed zoning is expected to have no negative impact as it aligns with the zoning and characteristics of the surrounding area. Can you find the location map? This is the potential split. Watch this. Well, if it's going to be approved, that will be the potential split.
Please.
There's the area view. Again, the character area based on our comprehensive plan is rural residential. This site is located, again, within the rural residential character area, which promotes low intensity, single-family residential development. As said earlier, the proposed rezoning is expected to have no negative impact as it aligns with the zoning and characteristics of the surrounding area. Staff recommend approving a 1.5, 1.50 acre portion of the total 8.27 acres, changing its designation from agricultural to rural residential to create a buildable lot for a single-family dwelling. The site is identified, as mentioned earlier, this is for parcel 0408081, while the remaining approximately 6.77 acres will retain its existing agricultural designation. This approval, this recommendation comes with the following conditions. One, the remaining approximately 6.77 acres should be combined with the tract identified as parcel 040080 to create a conforming AG zone lot totaling 13.27 acres. Any questions?
Thank you, Charles. Uh, Mr. Phil, man? See, I think, there he is. Forward, concerns.
How you doing?
Your best, your home address.
It's Howard Louis Valamont. 494 Hill City Road, Jasper, 30143.
What would you add to what Charles has just reported?
That's what I should pretty much hit a nail on the head.
Secondly.
Chen? All right. Very good. Questions, surely? At the stem. The base names.
The only question I had was a wording on this, the remaining 6.77 acres should be combined. They started with five to these.
Well, we're just making sure that as a condition that that remain will remain agriculture.
It will be.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. All right, further questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Um, just, yes, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you're just asking if there's anyone else to speak.
Molly, our esteemed attorney is always keeping me checked. Is anyone else that wanted to speak on that? Ken? Just want you to for or against what we're about to consider here. All right. Thank you, Molly. All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the staff recommended rezonation.
Thanks.
Including with the conditions.
Correct.
Correct. You told me it was.
And that's what the show and same showed.
Yeah. Is there a second? Let her come. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your question. Motion carries. Thank you. You know, we make a recommendation, the commission could actually make the plans official.
Yes, right, I know.
Yes, good, good deal. Thank you, good to see you. Sorry, we stood you up last month.
It's okay, I'll give them... I went away to... Something else going on?
Have a good evening.
All right.
All right, we will close that hearing. And we'll open a new hearing now under due business, RZ-191034.
Yes, again, this, this case is referenced as RZ-191034. The applicant is Tina Davis Thomason. Location of the property is 486 Big Ridge Road. Our request is to change from, from small ag to rural residential. The subject property is approximately 6.39, 39 acres. Parcels identified as 034, 084, 201. The intent is to create residential, single-family residential lots. The tract includes an approximate 6,000 square foot garage building, originally intended for residential use. However, the structure has not completed the permitting process as of the permit date, which we found in our records to be June 19, 2020. The area is designated as a rural residential character area in the comprehensive plan, which emphasizes preserving open space and maintaining a low-density rural environment. There is the location map. That is the potential split. And you see the existing building there that was, was in process for permission, but it didn't complete its permitting process. That's the area view. Again, this, this, the character area is designated as rural residential based on our comprehensive plan. The staff recommends approval of the rezoning request for a 6, 6.39 acre tract from small ag to rural residential. The intent is to facilitate the subdivision of the property into two residential lots. The tract includes an approximate 6,000 square foot garage building, originally intended for residential use. However, the structure has not completed the permitting process, as mentioned earlier, as of the permit date of June 19, 2020. The property is bordered by rural residential zoned land to the west and small ag zoned land to the east. Additionally, rural residential zone parcels are located along the north side of Big Ridge Road. The area is designated as a rural residential character area in the comprehensive plan, which emphasizes preserving open space and maintaining a low-density rural environment. Although RR zoning allows for higher density, this small ag is still supports low-intensity development consistent with the area's rural character. The proposed zoning aligns with the long-term planning goals and surrounding land uses. The staff recommends with the following condition. Give me just a second. Y'all's heads are in the way of my slide.
What are you trying to say, Charles?
I tried to say anything. Okay, thank you, Molly. Upon subdivision, the existing garage building must be permitted as a single-family dwelling. It must comply with all applicable building codes, including environmental health and safety standards. Any questions?
Thanks. There may be some, but we'll, we move on. Uh, Ms. Thompson, now attempt to step forward, please.
Yeah. Great, Grace is going to speak at every time. Sorry.
Okay, send your name and address, please.
Grace Statet, 112 Grace Lane, Tuck, Missouri, Georgia, 30175.
So you're speaking, Ms. Thomason?
Yes, sir.
All right. So what would you add to what Charles has just reported to us? You got your rezoning requests?
Not much to add. The residential lots are intended for family.
The, um, so, um... Who started the construction of the 6,000 square foot?
Um, this name says ex-husband.
Okay. And so, what's the status of it now?
Uh, the building is incomplete.
Okay.
Um, it's just an empty structure waiting to be completed.
Okay. So, with this rezon request, um... She's prepared to go ahead and complete that?
Okay. Um, the property would be sold and the buyers are the ones that will be permitting its residential use.
So has the property been sold, or is it about to be sold, or?
Uh, no, the only reason it's not under contract currently is because of Mr. Thomason refusing to comply with the divorce terms and signing the quick mind deed. But the contract is written up and ready to be signed as soon as where they leave it.
Okay. And then what's going to happen on the other part of the parcel? The other part of the land?
Both lots would be residential.
And?
I'm sorry if I didn't understand that.
And who's gonna, who's gonna live on the other piece? The other piece has no houses on it now.
Correct. The front house would be my aunt Jennifer Dup. And the rear part, real portion is being purchased by a young couple, Brandon and Jessica Moore.
The rear, is that which?
The one with the building on it is a rear portion.
All right. Okay. Stand back, questions?
The, uh, one of those turned into a bit sent with all the, all the stuff that, uh, you kept that you've been involved with building out there and seeing, and so others. If that whole stretch, stretch right there is, is, uh, given heavily, yes, uh, calculated. Ken, is, are they planning on making a separate driveway entry into Big Ridge right up there? Or will they use the existing drive?
Um, so legally, they would have to provide an easement in order to use the same driveway. So the plan is to create a short driveway onto the existing lot block. So that way they have complete legal separation.
So I have... Further questions? So what are the conditions of approval that Charles has recommended? The vine subdivision, the existing garage building must be permitted as a single-family dwelling. It must comply with all building codes. In other words, it needs to be completed. Is that correct, Charles?
Correct.
So... Are, are you prepared to do that?
Uh, yes, the young couple is, it will be their home. They're working with Community Bank of Pickens on the building. Watching over there, great guy.
Charles had addressed your concerns?
Yes.
Okay. Further questions? Is there anyone else that wanted to speak?
Yeah.
Regarding this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, with the conditions as stated.
Second. The motion to approve the rezoning request with the conditions noted and the recommendation. Is there further, do we have a second? Second. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And keep motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we will close that hearing.
Right.
Close of the hearing now, pause. You have? Just felt?
Yes, again, this case is referenced as RZ-19040, I'm sorry, 191040. The applicant is Wesley Babcock. Location is, uh, located along Cold Road. The request is to rezone from ag or agricultural to small, small agricultural. The tract, uh, the size of the tract is 12.81 acres. The intent by the applicant is to split the lot between two family members. This 12.81 acre property lies within the East Pickens Conservation Area, a region that promotes low-intensity development. It is also designated as the quote-unquote gateway to the mountains in the Pickens County comprehensive plan, which emphasizes the use of larger lot sizes to preserve scenic views and maintain rural character of the communities. This is the location map of the property. Uh, this is the potential split. Should this request, uh, the single approval? There's the area view of the property. Again, we just mentioned like this, the character area is designated as East Pickens Conservation Area. Subject property, again, lies within the East Pickens Conservation Area. The proposed rezoning from agricultural to small ag aligns with these planning objectives. Although small ag zoning allows for higher density to agricultural, requiring only five acre minimum lots compared to AG's 10 acre minimum, the district remains consistent with the area's rural character and developed vision. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request for the 12.81 acre tract identified as parcel 043015002. The rezoning will facilitate the creation of two separate lots. So tract one would be a total of 6.65 acres. Tract two would be a total of 5.03 acres. Uh, this change is not expected to negatively impact on the environment that supports the long-term goals of the comprehensive plan. You have any questions?
Thank you, Charles. Um, Babcock? Are you up on that?
I was nephew, I'm getting the piece subdivided. That's my uncle Wesley.
All right, name and address.
Jonathan Babcock. I live at 275 Babcock Road, and my uncle's at 2200. They're both adjoining.
Got you. Okay. So, Charles, what's going to go on here?
I just keep it woods next to my 11 acres. Because it's his family property, it's going to be another little bit of property, and we're just going to keep it woods. Hopefully for my whole lifetime.
So, uh, who's been doing the classes?
Classes.
The current conditions?
No, no.
The wooden piece.
You're looking at Anthony Benex, Steve.
Sorry about that, we can make stop here. Got you. So, uh... Uh, I'll yield to the rest of the crowd here to... Questions? For further questions, you can commission.
All agreed, you're rezoned, it's just to split it.
So we can split it, because it's got to be small ag, because since ag, we can't split 12 acres, you know, into two 10 acre parcels, so yes.
You're going to let him own the building.
No, I'm actually fishing my house on an adjoining parcel right now, not planning to move again, so.
Okay. Other questions? All right, do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, wait, can you all ask? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, okay?
Molly's doing her job. Are there any other folks who would like to speak regarding to this particular hearing? So, please, I've seen, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you. So do I have a motion?
Motion to approve as stated.
We have a motion to serve a second.
I'll serve.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries. Sir, thank you. We have a head that's need to wrestle with, like they... A little on, Timco. All right. We're now open hearing on RZ-191050. Karen Smith, submission.
Chairman, you was getting ahead of yourself. I would follow you on the case. See you. 191050, the applicant is Karen Smith. Location of the property is 834 Worley Crossroads. The total, the total acreage is 20, 20 acres. Parcel is identified as 065010. Intent is to host fall and spring concert series. So if y'all recall, uh, several months ago, uh, Karen Smith, the applicant was approved conditional use. And I'll go, I'll go over that, you know, with a recommendation. The property is designated as AG, which currently permits a small event venue. Uh, this property consists of 20 acre tract. All previously approved conditions would remain unchanged. So here's the local, location map. Area view. And I believe, before I give my, before I give this staff's recommendation, I believe Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith has a short presentation to show. Uh, the staff recommends approval of additional condition to add on to the current conditions designated as AG, which currently permits a small events game. Uh, this, and the current conditions, if I can, uh, say them out loud once again, is cooking, or remind you all what the conditions were. Cooking and related classes would, uh, would be held on Saturdays from 11 to 1 PM. The maximum of 12 participants conducted twice a month. Sunset yoga sessions that would take place on Saturdays from 5:30 PM to 6:45 PM. Maximum of 20 attendees held once a month. Uh, farm tours will be organized no more than three times per week between the hours of 10 AM and 5 PM. Then especially events included, uh, Jeep Fest, that featured off-site area for attendees to engage with community and experience the farm, with all activities, including live music permitted until 10. Uh, all other previously outlined conditions, as I said earlier, would remain unchanged. And tonight, we're before, achieved for you to include this additional condition. A fall and spring concert series that would feature three concerts each season, with music concluding by 10 PM. So that would be the new condition that's added to the older, well, the previous, previously approved conditions. This would allow a little bit more flexibility in the concert series that they have planned to accomplish.
Okay, thank you, Charles. All right, Karen, Karen Smith. Finally got on the right page, Karen. Please state your name and address.
I'm Karen Smith, 834 Worley Crossroads, Jasper, Georgia, 30143.
Okay. So you got a lot going on?
Yes. We do, we do.
So... You're going to piggyback off of Jeep Fest. That's the right, Karen?
Yeah, yes, correct.
So there would be another venue for sure. Jackie, after?
The Jeep Fest?
Yeah.
Um, it was already something we tried, and it was a really nice thing that for people that are going to Jeep Fest, to be a lot of a place to stay.
Interesting. And then you want to expand that with this concert series?
We do. We found out in the fall that there wasn't very much music available to Pickens County, so that we tried, and it became really popular, and we really loved it. And, um, kind of wanted to ask for permission to do a spring and fall.
Okay. All right. Questions?
So you're already having these on students?
We did, we tried it, um, the second Saturday of, um, September, October, and... And just because we're only one year into our business, so we kind of wanted to see if it was something Pickens wanted or Jasper wanted, so we gave it a try. And we yet received a great, you know, great reception, so we'd love to keep doing it.
I have a question.
Okay.
How do you, I understand music, I understand concerts, I know how that goes. How do you make sure you don't have like loads and loads of people, loads and loads of cars and a concert getting out of control?
That is a great question. So we only do ticketed events. That means we can control how many people can buy a ticket through Eventbrite, so I can cap it off at a certain amount. And I also hire an outside event planner who does large events, called Expedition Events, and they handle all the logistics, parking, security, anything like that. And then also, I can pretty much monitor how many tickets I can sell for how much I want to have at my place. So ticketed events are really important in the fact that we hire somebody outside to do all the logistics.
So the Jeep Fest camping that weekend, that all went smoothly and?
Perfect. It was wonderful, it was wonderful. Plus, what's I think important to know is we're about, our driveway is fourth mile long, and so when you come to the event space to go into a concert or to Jeep Camp, it's about two football fields off of Worley Crossroads. So there's no traffic backed up because by the time you get onto our property, you have a little bit of a drive before you even get to the event space.
Yeah, I actually rode by your property today to look after reading through the notes they had sent us. So music, is your neighbors complaining about noise or any of that or?
They've all come to it and even the older, my older gentleman who lives the closest, he was in full support, he was wonderful about it.
So have you had any neighbors that are unhappy about it?
No, I mean, I've invited them all, they've all come. I mean, I, that concerned me. And so I talked to all of them and they've been so supportive and they all want to come and, or they've all told me, they've come down my driveway and said we're really supportive and it sounds great.
So the events you are having out there, you have control of the cars, the traffic, the people?
It's very easy to control because we're so far off of the road and the neighbors are involved.
And you pre-sell everything, so?
We pre-sell everything by ticket.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't want a bunch of people on my property either, so I'd love to know where I could cap it off. So it's controllable, you know, I want to be able to make sure it's a great thing for the community, it's a fun time for everybody within a controlled space. How many do you anticipate? Well, we have eight acres, so we could park a lot of people easily and it's very flat, so it's very easy for handicap parking, all kinds of parking. Anticipate, I probably could cap it off at a hundred cars. I could probably have a lot more than that, it's just not necessary.
How many people?
Hmm, how many could we handle?
How many people do you anticipate in those hundred cars?
I would.
You said you've got.
I would anticipate, I would like my concerts to be around two hundred people max. And so.
So the concerts you've had so far, how many cars did you have?
I can tell you ticket sales wise, we had thirty cars.
Okay.
So you said you were going to have pre-sold tickets?
Yes, sir.
How's that translate into people, is that two hundred tickets or?
Well, it's twenty dollars per lawn chair. We had thirty cars coming for the last concert. So it depends on how many people are in a car. So it still could be capped off at, I could still cap it off at two hundred because there's ticket sales by the seat. So if it's twenty dollars per lawn chair and I could cap it off at two hundred, you know, depends on how many people come in the car.
So if I can raise your own lawn chair?
Karen brings her own lawn chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
On materials that was received, it listed as rural business and I could not find that in reference. The materials that were received said that it was changing it from residential to rural business.
That's different case, that's a different case, that's from.
Oh, okay.
Steph, if I may add?
Just catching.
If I may add, Mrs. Smith and her husband, they stay in close contact with our sheriff's department and our fire. They're made aware before any of these events occur and they even show up to make sure that.
They've been really helpful, actually, so.
So I just wanted to add that.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you mention folks sign up that would like to speak about this? John Hurd? Come forward, John, give us your full name and address, please.
Yes, my name is John Wilson Hurd. I reside at four twenty two Oplah Drive, which is off of Highway one oh eight. We got a fifty acre, excess of fifty acres there that we've been in the family for seven, over seventy years. We've been living on the property now for a little over a year. And we built there because we want the quiet and the peace of living in the country. While I'm a firm believer in property rights, those property rights stop when you get to the property line. And the noise that's coming off of her venue is very loud in the evenings. I live from, as the crow flies, I'm probably close to a half a mile away on my back porch to her place. And it sounds like the bands playing on my back porch. So it's just extremely loud for the size of venue she's talking about. I don't understand why the volume has to be so much. I did a little research on the internet to see what was common with venues like this in residential and rural areas. And typically, they're not allowed. When they are allowed, they recommend that the sound be controlled and the noise be monitored and limited to a fifty decibel limit at the property line. So again, as I said, I don't have any problems with what she's doing on the property, just don't make a lot of noise on my property. And so if y'all approve this, I would ask that y'all put a noise limit of fifty decibels at her property line. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, we have. Edwin Wickington? Come forward, Mr. Wick.
The speakers best value whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition for time two.
In opposition.
I'm Edwin Wickington, sixty-sixth Green Ridge Road. I live about twelve hundred and fifty feet from the center of her property. I measured it on Google Maps. And Saturday night they had a concert and much like the gentleman was just saying ahead of me, on my screen porch, I could hear it about as well as the presentation was here tonight. And I'm about a quarter of a mile away. So the sound and then our access is off of Worley Crossroads, so just the increased traffic on Worley Crossroads, those were my two concerns.
So is it just the concerts? Is that the issue?
That's all that I've ever heard.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, I have one more, David Yates. Mr. Yates?
Hey.
Name and address.
My name is Dave Yates. I live at forty-one Pinnacle Way, Jasper, three oh four three. So I am the owner of Expedition Events and the event planner that she hires. We also have a full staff, so I've had my staff with me for about eight years, same staff, so we do, you know, our checking people have been the same, our security and our medical teams all the same, so we've had the same people for a long time, so we're very well organized and very experienced in doing this. Like she mentioned, the traffic is not an issue, especially being so far off the road, but our team is very, very experienced in doing this and keeping things organized and orderly and we know what we're doing.
Do you manage the bands?
Manage how.
This is the island.
So that's a collective effort. We are both involved in hiring staff, that, or the staff, the bands and things like that.
So we've got some concerns about the sound.
So another thing we were considering was moving the concert earlier in the evening. Currently, it was a six to ten thing, we were considering a five to nine. So that would help mitigate the sound on those days that we do have that out there.
So you stayed where considered?
Yeah, that's something that was, something that we were talking about doing mainly because we weren't, we wouldn't be pushing against that previous set ten o'clock time. It would give us leeway, so we wouldn't go over that time at all and would be no concern of that.
I don't know, from what I've heard, that doing it earlier would be better.
Well, sure, yeah, I mean, later, I mean, I would say, I would say earlier would be better if, you know, if people were concerned about the noise, pushing it earlier would be at least better.
I have a question.
Yes.
I attend a lot of concerts, local bands around music.
Yeah.
I don't understand, he, on his research, he found sound at fifty decibels.
Sure.
I don't know what that is, what that means, and what level is your sound at the concerts?
So I am not a sound professional, we also hire a team for that. I don't know the answer to that. I would imagine it's higher than fifty decibels, but I don't know the exact answer to that because we hire, we hire professionals to do that.
Okay.
Questions?
Could you not turn the music down?
That would be something we would, well, because I imagine even at fifty decibels they would hear it. So that's something I would have to talk to the audio team about because I don't know the answer to that. I imagine the answer would be yes.
Well, that's always everything I've heard is been so loud, I couldn't even understand what you're saying.
Right, well, and most of our acts are the acoustic guitar, bluegrass. We did have a full band on Saturday night to close it out, but we are mostly doing acoustic like we had in the video, so it's not a lot of drums and electric guitars, it's a lot of acoustic guitar, that kind of thing, singer-songwriter type stuff.
So when you do acoustic, it is literally a guitar unplugged and a microphone?
No, no, it's still amplified, but it's, you know, we're not doing generally hard rock or anything, you know, anything super loud and super obnoxious.
How does the band determine how loud they're going to play the music or the?
So I actually asked this question. Because we actually had a discussion about this on, when we were setting up on Saturday night. So they determine that based on, like if there's a drum kit, so we had a band Saturday night, so the drum kind of sets the standard for how loud the music has to be because the singers have to sing over the drum. So that generally sets the tone.
So not all drummers are created equal?
Correct, which is why we do testing, obviously, day of prior to the event, so we know what that sound level looks like.
Well, with two hundred people, I would present we are fairly close to the stage, I think.
So, yeah, I mean, we, they are, they, we do two sections, so we do a tailgating section and we do a lawn chair section. So the tailgating section, people will, like you saw the pictures in the video, there's, they'll set up tables and, you know, kind of tailgate like you would at a football or sporting event. And then we have the lawn chair set up, so we, the lawn chair people will generally sit closer and the tailgating people will sit a little bit further back.
Questions?
Yeah, we've had, Charles, we've had a suggestion, Mr. Hurd, well, fifty decibels would be acceptable. The challenge with decibels is managing decibels.
I have to ask that question. Currently, Pickens County doesn't have a decibel noise supportness. It's something that's been discussed in the past. If that were to be a condition, I would suggest that we table, get you that information, maybe see what neighboring counties, jurisdictions do. To answer whether or not fifty, that's why I'm not, I'm not able to answer that question at this time.
I suspect it is, sir.
Well, I have, I share their concerns with, you know, where I live, I live out on the hill and I can, neighbors have a party, I can hear, even though I'm a quarter mile away, I can still, still hear it if I step outside. Maybe not inside, but yeah, they're a quarter mile away, which raises concerns, but I don't see how you set decibels rating at an apartment wide and reasonably controlled.
Can I approach?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, if you haven't finished calling for the rest of the speakers, then she does have the opportunity for her to, but I would ask that the rest of the speakers.
That's all I had, is was anybody else that wanted to speak on this issue?
Can I approach? So now you, now it's your opportunity.
I just want to say that we are only trying to bring something to the community that will bring the community together. I got twenty-seven local business sponsors to support us. We are so excited to bring families together with great music. Decibels can be somewhat controlled, but it can't be controlled a mile away, but they do set decibels, from what I've heard and what they've, what they've kind of educated me on. Music does travel. We do really, we try really hard to bring music that will bring the community together to be excited to be together. And by just enjoying each other's company, sponsorships, the sponsors bring their best customers, their sponsors bring their families. Our whole goal is not to blast music and to bother my neighbors. The whole goal is to bring the community together and offer them something in the fall when the summer's over and the summer series is over. And they come out to a farm and see my animals and let the kids run around and see the Highland cows and see the miniature goats and enjoy the time. We bring food and we bring sweets and we bring music we hope that the family all wants to hear. That is our goal and that's what we've accomplished and it's really important to us that you understand our intention and it's worked and we've had so much support, we actually got sponsors that are already wanting to sign up for the next year. So I just wanted to let you know what our intention was.
And we said, and we also need to be good neighbors.
Absolutely, and we one hundred percent want to be good neighbors. We also can make the amount of concerts to two in the fall, just two, and two in the spring. We are willing to work with our neighbors, we absolutely do not want to disrupt anything. We just want to bring people together and enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Conditions before y'all continue deliberations, I didn't want to just weigh in, not on the substance, obviously, but just from experience in our office, since we represent some neighborhood governments, if y'all wanted our office to work with Charles and bring forward some similar ways that these kinds of things are approached, it should still obviously be up to yours to whether or not you're willing to impose those conditions. Now we need to talk to Charles on how the decibel levels could be implemented, whether we can have the enforcement capability. But as far as standards that have been implemented for similar special event facilities in nearby and neighboring jurisdictions like Cherokee I've specifically worked with, I'd be happy to bring that information for you to consider, whether it's for this one or for future use. I just wanted to let you know that is something our office has worked on.
It's a thorny issue, best way to strike, when I was, I happened to be attending a Dawson County, waiting, commission meeting, what? commission meeting, what's that, and, uh, the folks were, were upset with what was going on around the lake, because on football weekends, the houses that were being rented, there was a lot of noise, rambunctious football fans, probably Georgia fans and more than likely. But, but it's, it's a thorny issue, and hopefully need to be, everybody needs to be respectful of, of each other. I agree that a decibel, a decibel rating is, is challenging and, of course, we've got the, we've got the benefit of the wide open spaces. So our noise is going to carry further than will be in those other tight conditions and segments. So, uh, and it's suggested that they could change the hours of operation, would change the hours of operations. Been suggested that the number of concerts be against what they are.
Uh, Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. With the city of Jasper, they have events during the summer. I live right at the, uh, technical school. When they have their bands, we can hear the bands. So what, what is the city doing? How do they get around it? What, you know, do we know?
I'm making motion, we table it until, and while I'm, I'm like giving the information for us, to what some other jurisdiction you run, uh, and see if there is, can we, uh, by law limit, uh, and, and also if we tune in with what's going to do with our business.
Molly, what, what, what does that involve? How long does it take?
I could, I could do that tomorrow, frankly. I pulled, I actually pulled some other conditions that we've used to other jurisdictions, um, while y'all were listening to this, cause I expected this would come up. So there are a variety of ways you can approach it, whether it's regulating by decibels or by, and some jurisdictions have just said no amplified sound, um, for these kinds of things. So I can get some options over to Charles and it could be considered by you all at your hands, and get into in advance of that. There about. So y'all have to make recommendation with the board commissioners within forty-five days of the public hearing. And so, um, you would have to act to learn at your December meeting, otherwise it would go to the board without, than a bit of recommendation. Um, I can't say I can get you comfortable with everything, but I can at least give you the information for you to make your decision, right, well in advance of that. Absolutely.
Yes. Charles got, uh, Charles suggested have to be a discussion you'd have to have with the permissioners themselves.
I can have that discussion, but you all have a liberty to, to request table.
Yes, I'd say.
Yes. There's, there's motion, there's motion over.
And the tool.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Motion is to table. Is there a second?
A second.
Good. Motion and second to table. That's not. All in, further, further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. What do we get? Four? All against? Did you have seen?
I respectfully think the ladies should be able to run their business. So I'm not sure if I should have voted against or table or what.
It's your vote. It's your vote. Which way do you want to vote?
Let's table it. I don't want to tell her no.
So you, you vote in favor of table?
Yes.
All right. Okay. All right. Um, then, at the board's pleasure, I would ask Molly to look into the decibel issue. It's going to be thorny, just not only to the fighting, but how are you going to measure it in week?
Chairman? On a local level, in the county, not in the city, I do know music at Rocco's on Friday and Saturday night. In the past, there has been issues on sound, neighbor complaints. They have operated for years. They have had music for years. They figured out how to get around that. So I don't know what information, how they got around it, how they, I just know they have been able to, in the east, run their business and I haven't known of any complaints in a long time. And it's been there for years and it's been operating as an independence.
Thank you. I've never been to Rocco, so I don't know what the music's on. It could be loud and cold. All right. Thank you. We'll close that hearing and we'll open a new hearing on RZ one ninety-one zero five one. Start.
Yes. It's application is represented as RZ dash one nine one zero five one. John Halco and Willie Johnson are the applicants. Uh, the location of property is eight six five lumber, uh, Company Road. The request is to, uh, rezone from rural residential to rural business. Uh, total acreage is two point nine eight. Parcel is identified as zero two nine B one zero one. Uh, the intent is to continue use of the property as both a business and residence. The property has been operating as a grandfather business and this resulting, uh, will bring existing use, uh, into conformity with current zoning standards, potentially. Uh, the rural business district supports, uh, compatible commercial activities in rural areas, enhancing the local economy while preserving the county's rural character and minimizing impacts on surrounding farmland, timberland and residential uses. If I may, uh, just go off the cuff a little bit here, uh, just to add some additional information. Uh, the zoning district rural business is a new zoning district, uh, that, that was approved by, uh, uh, Board of Commissioners as part of our revamping of the old rural code ordinances. Uh, and the purpose of this rural business, uh, was to allow, uh, more of a, uh, way for residents to supplement their income, uh, without making it a full-fledged commercial highway business, enable to get, uh, enable a commercial situation. Uh, so rural business is pretty much what we would call a home occupation on steroids, pretty much. Allows more, uh, more opportunity for folks to supplement their income.
Give us some example of some, of Charles.
Some examples would be, uh, you have folks that have, that will want to sell fruit, uh, they have jammed up, they want, they want to do to make their fruit stand, or they have chickens in the backyard, and they would want to, uh, uh, sell their eggs, what have you. Uh, that would be an example of rural business. Or folks that have a separate business, a, a separate building, a garage where they're doing simple work inside that garage, uh, as a part of, uh, that property's land use, which would also include the principal land use for the single family.
Would that be like, uh, working on automobiles?
Potentially, potentially. This here is a very, very old survey. Where did someone wrong, Mr. Halco? Uh, that predates actually the building that's on there, uh, down the property. But this is, this is the original survey that was on the property. This is the air, aerial view. You see in this aerial view, you see the building, uh, there's a modular home and there's also two, two additional, uh, mobile home residences on the property. And I, I'm mentioning that purposely, uh, uh, as, as part of the recommendation I'm going to give later, maybe the staff. Uh, location map. Uh, the character area designation is, uh, rural residential. Staff recommends approval of the, of the request to rezone, uh, the portion of a two point nine eight acre tract. Uh, the property has been operating, as I said earlier, as a grandfather business, and this resulting will bring the existing use into conformity with current zoning standards. And if I may add to that, uh, when Mr. Halco came into our office, uh, he was trying to see any ways to make this more of a corrective action, uh, given that this grandfather use has been there for a while, uh, with business license, has active business licenses as well. And given the fact that the, the area is rural residential, we try to find the best way to be able to incorporate, uh, the existing business there, uh, giving, uh, the planning zoning staff more teeth in terms of enforcing, uh, 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 any ordinances, uh, that, that will come up down the road. It'll give us more teeth to be able to enforce our, our code. Uh, the RB district supports, uh, compatible commercial activity in rural areas, enhancing the local economy while preserving the county's rural character and minimizing impacts on surrounding farmland, timberland and residential uses. Uh, this change provides an appropriate transition between residential and certain small commercial uses, uh, allowing continued lawful operation of the business without increasing its intensity or disrupting, uh, the community's character. And based on what I mentioned earlier, uh, we've applied these following conditions for approvals. Uh, number one, operational, uh, con- continuity. The current operations of the business will remain intact as it is right now, including the schedule of Monday through Friday, eight AM, uh, to five PM. Condition number two, uh, subdivision requirement. The subject lot, uh, shall be subdivided into two tracts to separate the two existing rental, rental manufactured homes from the existing business and other modular home. Uh, what we're suggesting is that top half of the lot stay or remain as rural residential with those, uh, two mobile homes. That way it doesn't further complicate, uh, what's, what's on that property now with the business and the other modular homes. So, so we thought, uh, as, as, as a means of further corrective action, those two homes remain as rural residential. Okay? Uh, the portion containing the homes will remain zoned, as I mentioned earlier, uh, rural, rural residential will be a minimum of one point five acres. Then condition number three, compliance collaboration. And, and what that is, is the owner or applicant will continue collaborating, uh, with county staff to ensure ongoing compliance with county codes. So give you an example of that. If, if access encroachment is needed, you'll have to come to our office to get that approval. Uh, as far as, uh, additional buffer, whether vegetative, you know, natural buffer or something that they have to, have to, uh, put on the property, uh, as a screening, uh, explaining to the abutting properties, we will have that teeth to, to be able to enforce that as well. So, so when we're saying this, with this third condition, to ensure ongoing compliance, anything further that's going on with that property would now have to come through, uh, our department. Any questions?
So, so is the property in compliance with that? With what's going on there with the mobile homes and everything?
It's legally non-compliant. Okay. And again, this would be considered a, a somewhat corrective, corrective action.
So it goes, slip through the crack?
I wouldn't really say slip through the cracks. Uh, I can't speak for what went on twenty, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years ago. Uh, I do know through the years that the county has been a lot more progressive in terms of, uh, enforcing its zoning code. Uh, but once again, uh, this is a grandfather business. Uh, it'll be one thing if it was, if it was a grandfather business, it did not have an active business license, and it does have active business license.
What, what kind of businesses?
I will allow the advocate to explain exactly, uh, what he's doing there, but, but, uh, what we've been told is that it's, uh, it's an assembly, uh, of a business, uh, that they're doing it inside of.
Thank you, Charles.
You're welcome.
Mr. Halco?
Yes.
Come forward.
Thank you.
Full name and address?
John Halco, twenty-eight eighty-nine Upper Bethany Road, Jasper, three zero one four three.
So you operate this and only put yourself there?
Correct. We, uh, we bought that from Lenny Payne, I think it was ninety-nine, and, uh, we've been manufacturing, well, I should say, we, we, we don't manufacture there anymore. We're an assembly plant. We used to manufacture some years ago. Uh, we have some machinery there that, uh, we used to build prototypes, but basically, all of our, um, materials are aluminum. Now, now you just have it as aluminum. We have it made at large factories, most of it down Peachtree City right now. They ship it to us. We put it together. Uh, we cater to the horseshoeing industry, the ferrier trade. We assemble shoeing boxes, uh, tonneau covers for the trucks, uh, small racks and shelves that they were using in the business. And, uh, I said, we've been doing that since about ninety-nine. And, um, what we're, we're basically trying to do is get into compliance legally with whatever zoning is now. We don't want to be the sore thumb in the neighborhood. We're trying to be as good a neighbor as possible. Um, as a matter of fact, when we, uh, well, decided to do this, we said, well, I, I just go around and inform all the neighbors, say, we're, we're going to, to, uh, apply for rezoning to residential businesses, Jerry and Charles recommended, uh, simply to be in compliance, if you will. We don't plan on changing anything, uh, as far as our, uh, assembly process. We work eight to five, five days a week. We do some, some work after hours, but there would be my grandson and myself over there, maybe working on a boat or a car. We don't make any noise after five o'clock, uh, factory-wise, if you will.
So you, what, where do you get marketing? Is it all over?
Yes, uh, we, we, uh, we ship, you know, in the United States, there's probably, um, forty thousand ferriers, uh, in Georgia alone. The, the ferrier market is, is actually fairly large. I don't know what it is in actual dollars, but I would think it's, uh, probably a hundred million dollars just in, in Georgia. And we ship these products all over the country. Uh, it's, it's kind of a finite market. It's not like it's, not like we're the corner grocery store and people are coming in, uh, twenty-four, seven. Most everything we ship out UPS, uh, every now and then we'll ship something else, T out, like it'll, it'll go by UPS. And occasionally somebody will come by and pick something up, uh, maybe once, once a week or once every couple of weeks, somebody might come in. So there's very little traffic other than the UPS truck.
Do you continue to, do you plan to continue to operate this business yourself?
Well, well, I'm getting long in the tooth. So, uh, my partner and I, Willie Johnson, we're, uh, we've sold the business part to Mr. Tom Heiser, and he is here tonight. And he wants to continue the business as is, doing the same thing. Um, and, uh, we would like to sell the property to him or to whoever, but he wants to be assured that we're in compliance with whatever Pickens County codes are. Charles and Jerry were, were kind enough to show us, hey, why don't we do it this way? This is a good way to do it. It has a good, uh, possibility of, of, uh, being legal, if that's a proper way to say it.
So you're comfortable with all of the recommendations in Charles's book, Paul?
Yes, they all work. Uh, you know, we understand where, well, I think they'll work. We're, we understand we're grandfathered in. We can continue to be there. We just want to make, um, like I said, I went around canvassed everybody that was home for the last couple of weeks, knocked on their doors, said, hey, you know, we're planning on doing this. Want to make sure no one's having any troubles and so forth.
I think a bunch of those showing up tonight.
Yeah, pretty.
All right, so who occupies the mobile homes that exist there today?
We have the three there, the double wide, the chap is staying there for about, oh, I guess about six years, seven years.
Do you own the trailers?
Yes, yes, the two trailers that we own, and we rent those out to folks.
And they've been long-term tenants?
The ones in the front trailer, closest to Milbrook Company Road, have only been there for less than a year. Over the years, we've had several people in there. And some of them haven't been the nicest neighbors. And we've had to ask them to leave. Some of them we've had to get evicted. The people in there now, the front trailer, some really nice folks. And in the back trailer, some really nice folks, man, his wife and their kids. Just real good people. Mr. Hubbard in the front trailer, he's been just an absolute prince of the guy. He's taken that double wide and put it back together. We got ready to doubt to some folks that, and I won't say who recommended, but we were told that family needed a home and we rented it out. It got into pretty bad shape pretty quick. And we had to ask those people to leave. So we screened them pretty good. Sometimes we make a mistake and the wrong people get in. But we've lived here in Pickens County, we moved here since nineteen eighty. We try to be good neighbors. We're not trying to force ourselves on anybody. I'm sure people would object to us having a business there, but we're not, we don't do anything after five o'clock. Business-wise.
Let me see if my fellow technicians have questions also.
How many employees?
We have three people in there now. My son works there. And we have two other employees. They all live in Pickens County. My son's been there for over twenty years now. James Brown's been there for, I guess, about ten years now. And we just hired a new fellow. He's still going to the tech school. Just a wonderful young lad. So that's our employees, three there at the shop.
Do you have plans for expansion beyond what we're doing now?
No, we're kind of limited. When I say the ferrier market is maybe a hundred million in Georgia, I'm talking about what they buy and consume. But you know, over the years, I would say that the ferrier industry has increased since World War Two. But it's, there is a saturation point. We, it's not like there's a million dollars of gross sales we could do out of that building. We're much, much less than that. And that's what the market is.
It's a limited market, but in the state of Georgia, what folks don't realize is what horse population is right in the lodge.
Yes.
Where number two, Texas. And are you doing any fabrication work there with regard to welding?
We do some welding of the material that comes in. But we've evolved from that. We used to bring in sheets of aluminum and extrusion. We'd cut it and bend it and drill it and everything. Now everything is preformed for us. All we do is put it together. Screwdriver and a wrench, like buying Ikea furniture, we're just assembling it. In the assembly process, we have to do some welding to finish assembling. We don't do any, we have some heavy machinery there that we use for many prototypes. But we don't, we're not making anything from scratch anymore. We used to have five employees, I think we had maybe six employees, plus my son there. And we're down to three now, including this. Because we can have it made more efficiently out of town, in Peachtree City is where it comes from now mainly. So the manufacturing is almost new. It's assembly work.
Further questions? All right, thank you, sir.
As you call, if we can have those in favor come first, just for time to bring the notices.
Right, I'm Tom. Thank you. All right, I have six people that signed up. I have one for and five against. And plus, I got an email today from another person who has concerns. So we'll start out with the four and what I would ask is, since the hour is getting late, is if we try to move along within ten minutes of the total discussion. Want to give adequate time, but if somebody is saying something that's already been said, I think ones will have, do the job for us. So if I could have Mr. Heiser come forward.
Mr. Heiser?
Good, how about you?
Name and address.
So my real name is Lloyd Heiser, but I go by Tom. So I live at seven twenty-six Mill Rock Street, Lawrenceville, Georgia, three zero zero four four.
So you're speaking in favor?
I'm speaking in favor. Yeah, I bought the business, the business from them two years ago. So I've been in the business for roughly two years. I don't know that I can add a whole lot to it, except for the fact that we've been, since we bought it and since my company's been operating it, there's been discussions about where, if we, you know, what's going to happen with the business if we don't stay there, because it's not easy to move it somewhere else. I'd like to stay in Pickens County. I enjoy it here. I would love to get out of Gwinnett County, just to be honest with you, but you know.
I did that twenty-something years.
I should have done it twenty years ago, but my problem is I've got five businesses around the United States, so I got to get to the airport. So if I go from here to there, it's a little bit longer ride for me than I do normally, but.
Just buy yourself a jet.
There you go. There you go. That's a good point. I like it. So I don't know that really I can add a whole lot more to it. We do, as John said, we build, you know, tonneos, we build a whole bunch of stuff. We do ship worldwide. But for the most part, we sell through distributors and dealers. One of the things that I changed was we're trying to get away from selling to individuals to go through dealers. So it was easier business for the way I run business and where I came from. So most of the things we do, sell through dealers around the United States. But we do sell globally. I think we've got two tonneos in the Middle East, as a matter of fact, for some wealthy gentleman that owns some rather expensive horses. But I'm not sure I can add a whole lot else other than people to ask questions.
So you bought the business, but he owns the land?
Yes, that's exactly right. And as, you know, as he said, he was getting a little long in the tooth. I don't agree with that so much. He's pretty spry, if you ask me.
Agent of the mental state.
It is, I know. And he's still, those two are still ambassadors for me. They go with me in trade shows. So I'll vouch for them being pretty younger than they look, maybe. Not even sure look-wise.
Questions for Mr. Heiser and the board? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, not in any particular order, but just the way I've got them stacked here. Let's see. Jimmy Moore? Jimmy, I'm sorry. My apologies. I had another person for.
I'm sorry.
You'll pause, I'll see, I'll call you in a second. John Heiser? You must be the son.
I am the junior. John Halco, five two nine Frontier Road, Jasper, Georgia. I don't think I've got much more to add other than we have at times used this business for personal projects, just more or less as a garage. And that's been few and far between. As a concern for noise, I know we've had it in place specifically for Mr. Moore. Different occasions. We took a desk recorder app, I don't know if it was any scientific, just to try to see where we were at. We went to our property line and measured it, and from what I understand, the human speaking voice, it's about sixty to sixty-five decibels. We were considerably lower than that. Our concern was there's an air compressor in the business and that can run during the day. It's kind of one of these noises that can carry. So at the furthest, or the furthest point from the shop to Mr. Moore's house, yeah, we were over halfway towards his house and it was less than a human speaking voice. Yeah, that was kind of curious. Anyway, we try to be quiet, but we do have renters that are doing stuff at different times. There's been occasions that we have used it for personal use and stuff. But not often, unlike the brakes in the wax car. Every now and then, had to do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Jimmy Moore, I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
Call him back up here.
I'm sorry, you can't get me, ladies and gentlemen.
Give us your name and address.
My name is Jimmy Keith Moore. I live at nine five seven Milbrook Country Road. I've owned this property since nineteen eighty-eight, bought it from Mr. Sheila and Curtis Bunch.
And how far are you from this property?
I'm not sure, probably four hundred foot maybe, but his property is down his driveway. And mine is down the driveway. And I sit on my porch and I look at this front door on the shop. So I see it very good and hear it very good. But I'd like to start out by saying, I give you my address and how long I've owned the property. And my wife, my two sons, we got there. My son thinks, yeah, he just wanted to build a house there, which is going to be tough for us. But anyway, I want to start out, this business started as a small father and son. It's a little boat repair shop. And you know, this was back in the nineties. We didn't bother too bad. The noise was overbearing, so my neighbors and I, we discussed it. And just trying to be good neighbors, we just ignored it, didn't say anything. But as time went on, noise, more noise, and more employees. Business was now a welding shop. Noise is very loud, working up into the late hours. And as I expressed my concerns about all the noise, I was told by Mr. Halco, they had outgrown John, the junior, who was up before me, junior third, I'm not sure what he is, that they had outgrown the building and were looking for other buildings that were more suitable for his business. And I said, man, that's great, you know, thank you for that, you know. And again, as time passed, louder, more frequent, more employees. Of the six employees that I could count, just by driving by, looking at their vehicles. The business was now customized fire trucks, with even more employees and even more noise and even later hours. Then again, the business changed to American Fair Systems Manufacturer. Although Mr. Halco tells everybody his business is an assembly plant, he advertised it as an American Fair Systems Manufacturer. He has a website. I'd like for y'all to look at that if you ever want to look up his website. Their YouTube video showing customized products telling how they're built and where they're built. I would like to ask y'all to look for that website. Yeah, if you look at the website, you'll agree, this is not an assembly plant. This is not a small father and son business. This is indeed a manufacturing business and rural residential neighborhood. And I was told by the county officials, it was grandfathered in, it's a boat repair shop. And they could not, could not expand the business, nor could they change the business or sell the business. That's what I was told. And over the years, we've watched the business building be expanded, more buildings being built on property, and what appears to be a tiny home that was just set up in the past few weeks. And as I look at Key Public in this business, you know, it's this business, service repair garage. That has always been owned by Mr. Halco, but recently I've noticed the owners are now John Halco and Willie Johnson. As in the recent letter, Mr. Halco sent me on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, he has sold the business to Mr. Tom Heiser two years ago. Mr. Charles Reese, much respect, from planning development, said Mr. Halco, Willie Johnson are the owners, and he had not heard of Mr. Thomas Heiser. So who is the owner of the property? Mr. Halco, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Heiser, all three of them? And what bothers me is Mr. Halco's been profiting off this manufacturing business for twenty-something years. But not only is he profiting from the manufacturing business, it sounds like Mr. Johnson and Mr. Heiser are profiting off of that in our county, at our expense, as the people that live there. As I brought up these concerns with Mr. Halco and his son John, their reply to me was, our motto is, this is what I was told, our motto is, it's easier to get forgiveness than permission. And it looks like that's what their motto is for the county's rules and regulations, as well as the people who live there that abide by the rules and regulations.
Okay, we ran you short on time.
Well, there's twenty years of this.
But what we're concerned about, of course.
Regardless of the county, I was told by Mr. Charles, planning development, zoning is past such things, such as chickens. People want to sell eggs, as I mentioned tonight, and could have a fruit stand to sell their homegrown vegetables, or maybe they have a small building they want to do office work out of. As I reminded Mr. Charles, this is not someone selling a few flats of eggs or vegetables or doing office work. This is a manufacturing business with multiple employees, with multiple eighteen-wheelers in and out of this business. And if you're familiar with Milbrook Company Road, some of you are, this road's not suitable for eighteen-wheelers. You can't make half the turns without using both lanes. Okay, and it's a very busy road. It's probably one of the busiest roads in our county now, as y'all know. And when they're entering or leaving his business, they have to use both lanes and part of Mr. Jim Whither's yard just to get out in the road. This is on top of a hill with a blind side. People can't see that truck pulling out in the road. And the both lanes are used. I could talk about the disrespect, the illegal things that's gone on for all these years, but I'm not going to. I'm going to stop with that. A manufacturing business in a rural residential neighborhood, this manufacturing business should have never been here. Not only is it a business, it's a nuisance to our neighborhood, it's delivery trucks are a danger to the community. So in the closing, I would ask that you not approve this zoning. And have whoever owns this business move it to a location that's proper for this business, not in a residential neighborhood. And this is not selling a few eggs or a fruit stand or a little office in the back of the building. This is a full-blown manufacturing company with metal shears that they use quite frequently. And if y'all know anything about metal shears, they are extremely loud. And I was told before I left the office, with Mr. Regis, much respect, that he's trying to make it right. In my opinion, if you're not doing wrong to start with, why are you having to come back and make it right? We've suffered through this for twenty-seven years. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sam Whither?
My name's Sam Whither. I live at seventeen seventy-six Milbrook Company Road. And I'm here to represent my parents that live at eight oh four Milbrook Company Road, directly across from the property in question. And I just wanted, they're not even able to figure the cause of the headaches reasons, tell them that. But their concerns were the rezoning, and some of these questions have already been answered too. And I'll take them all notes about the expansion of the business footprint. And even just recently, someone asked the question, if it changed in business nature, could that business expand? And that's basically my question.
Yeah.
You can. And one other question is, as far as compliance is concerned. as you can talk about, I have the more teeth to make things comply. If something becomes out of compliance, not saying that it will, but if it did, what is the process there? Is public complaint and then where does it go?
Public complaint, you know, we have a county marshal. We also have a new position that's, uh, that we have now. Uh, she, she does our enforcement, uh, of the zoning codes. What I meant by more teeth, can I elaborate on that?
Please.
What I mean by more teeth is whether this is approved or denied, it's still grandfathered, it still do what you're doing. By going through this process, now we can get involved, meaning the planning, zoning department, and the, the marshal department, what have you, fire marshal, what have you. When we're receiving complaints, when we see that something is not in compliance, that's what I mean by more teeth. Uh, where we can go further than the fact that it's grandfathered in. Going through this process, it is still grandfathered in. But now all eyes are on the property in terms of keeping it in compliance.
Okay.
Did I ask your question?
Yes, thank you. One other thing that I'd like to leave you with, and, and I'm gonna say, with all of the cases that we've heard here tonight, it seems like noise, sound is a key contributor to most people's frustration with zoning requests and businesses or venues and things like that. And I just wanted to, to leave this with you. Cause, um, I, I, I realize sound monitoring is difficult and enforcement's difficult. So would it be out of line to ask people that are trying to build into residential areas that cause frustration really to more people around them than just the one entity that's creating the problem? Would it not be fair to have them have to construct sound barriers? I worked for the Department of Transportation for thirty years. And as, as you can see, when you drive around any metropolitan area now, federal government now requires state governments to put up sound barriers for interstates primarily. And it's, it's for that purpose, it's to buffer those, the noise and the traffic. The state agency owns that facility. And so as we can see from the federal government level, the state government level, you know, they take notice to people's lives and their livelihood at home and their residence. And they try to protect that as best they can. And I think it would be a fair, um, requirement for businesses or, or any type of, uh, venue situation that's creating that problem that wasn't there to start with. And, and ask them, you know, to be responsible to put up that type, you know, barrier system to protect the neighbor. That would be the neighbor thing we do in my picture. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sam. Good to see you.
Many questions, I did want to let you know, almost exactly as he sat down the ten minutes for opposition experts, if you want to hear from further opposition speakers, I'd need a motion to extend the time equally on both sides for however much time we want to.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to extend the time to let a few more folks speak?
On the motion. You know, give me a specific time for people being.
Ten minutes.
Ten extra minutes, okay. And just for clarification, that'll apply also for their rebuttals, so that time will be added for both sides.
Michael Young.
And, uh, I need the, an actual second vote on that.
Oh. Please be on. Did we get a, I think we had a motion.
We have a motion, we can do a second.
Pat, Pat, give a second. All favor, right hand, please. It'll be carried. All right, Michael Young.
My name is Michael Young. I live at nine two seven Lumber Company Road. It's right up against the property line we're talking about. The two trailers are for rent, right there across my fence line. Beyond that, there's a shop, I can't really see too much except for a roof. And I can't see the module unit at all. I've lived there for fourteen years. It's been a, um, dramatic fourteen years when it comes to Mr. Howko's property. Um, some mistakes were made in terms of assumptions on my part about what's going on. No one gives you a letter about land when you buy a property just for fun. But there's a lot of noise there and it's not just selling chicken eggs and having a fruit stand. Something where someone has a small office in the backyard where there's minimal of any sound. It's, it's loud, it's disruptive. Uh, you go out on the back deck to have family or guests over to have a barbecue. And now the featured sound is cutting, hammering, bending, compressors. Um, I don't know what everybody else can or can't hear, but I can hear. It's almost like it's a, a perfect alignment acoustically right to the side of my house. So, um, she's on, she's on. What is that?
Amborla.
Anyhow, um.
So noise is your concern?
It is the concern. I understand there's some traffic increases, that, that road is crazy out of, it's crazy traffic.
I have it.
I planted like thirty trees and I found out just hopefully maybe five years ago, buffered the sound out. I would be all for an organ, a, a sound ordinance. Higgins County just, I mean, we gotta deal with it. It's sound, it's just carries. But the idea of putting up some structure that might mitigate that, it's a good idea. I mean, I might be not a good idea for the business owner. I can understand that, but something needs to happen to reduce the, you know, sound. It's just not, it's not just a normal fruit stand. It's, it's a manufacturing facility. Whether they call it an assembly plant or not, doesn't matter. You just come over, just take a recording of what you hear on a named given date. And it's not just till five o'clock and it's not just Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You are.
Uh, Glenda. Henley.
Yes, thank you.
Sarah Glenda. Hello, Glenda.
Hello, how are you?
What's your last name?
Henley.
Henley, okay.
Yeah, can you hear me?
And you live at?
Nine ninety Lumber Company Road. I've lived there for twenty-four years. And my grandfather used to, they're my brothers first. Oh my gosh, nineteen sixty. And my sister-in-law used to fight me. I have, uh, I pretty much agree with what, uh, the last two, Sam and the.
Two.
Julie. And there has been noise there on the weekends, banging, just like bang, bang, bang. I've heard that before. And the traffic on that road is just horrible anyway. I've had my mailbox moved there five times and a lot of rags. So if there's gonna be any kind of, um, you know, tractor trailers, big vehicles coming in there once it's done commercial, it's gonna be dangerous. So, and there's nothing residential through there. We all lived there for a long years. And we love where we live.
Thank you. Bill, Henley and Alexander, both?
They've already basically said what we were gonna say.
Yeah.
If y'all come to the mic and say that, if you're gonna have to reiterate anything.
Oh, okay, we'll all show on the record. You guys speak for her?
Yeah. Sure, I'll speak for her too.
Bill and Lynn?
Yes, yes.
Alexander, what, what's your address?
Uh, nine five six Lumber Company Road. And, um, uh, we've, I've, we've only lived there since two thousand and fourteen. Um, and of course, we're not as close as our other neighbors.
Yeah.
Um, but we have family that we would like to eventually move that to that area as well. But we don't want to see it become a commercial.
I see.
Uh, development and with all the trucks and noise and stuff. And, uh, now pretty much I said everything that we were supposed to say.
Okay, good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I also, I received an email from, uh, Lee Sanders that lives at six seventy-seven Lumber Company Road. And, um, for key concerns, or his key concerns were, I guess summarize in terms of sound as well as traffic on the curve there. I won't read the entire thing, but we'll be consistent with what we've heard from tonight. So, uh, Mr. Howko, yeah, come back up, Glenn. We've had a lot of concerns expressed here. And, uh, some have suggested that you're not a good neighbor.
Well, um, I can honestly say without any equivocation, we did manufacture there for many years. We have decreased, almost totally eliminated our manufacturing. And I think anybody can come in our shop tomorrow and say, we've got some machinery there. We've got a large shear, makes a lot of noise. Uh, we've got a, uh, Niagara eighty-ton press. Uh, it doesn't make much noise, but we used to use those pieces of equipment. Gosh, folks, six, seven hours a day, five days a week. We don't use them six hours a month.
Yeah.
And that would only be to correct something that was maybe form wrong, uh, from a principal supplier to Peachtree City, uh, our shear. We used to run that dozens of hours per week. That is all stopped, virtually stopped. Manufacturing, our basic manufacturing that we did, um, for the first twenty years, we don't do that anymore. We can't make any money competing with automated machinery, there's computer operated. Uh, our workers are good people, uh, they're, they're good honest people, but they're not technicians in that sense. They're not crackerjack mechanics. We can take somebody off the street and bring them in and within a week, they're making as much as, uh, as far as assembly products, they're making as much as somebody that's been there for years. It's a very simple process. Everything we get already has the holes in it, all the pieces are formed. We simply put them together. We're not, we're not an egg farm, we don't, we're not selling tomatoes in the vacuum. We're sending these products. Uh, and to say that the noise has increased, that's not quite accurate. I, I would say conservatively, it's got to be ninety percent less. Uh, we just recently installed another air compressor that Mr. Heiser bought. Uh, it's probably twenty-five percent as loud decibel level as our previous one. And the previous one was a very, uh, very quiet machine. It wasn't your typical one that you buy at, at a big box store. It was a commercial machine meant to be used inside a building, uh, where, where noise would be a factor inside. So even the air compressor, um, is, is much more quiet. And when, some years ago, maybe ten years ago now, Mr. Moore complained about the air compressor and I hadn't left it on on the weekend, it was my fault, folks. I didn't turn it off and it ran over the weekend. He complained about that. Monday morning, I put up the sound barrier effects and it's still up there. Now, take that back, we just, we just took it down because we changed the compressor. So our attitude has been try and be a good neighbor. Are, are we perfect? No. But we do not work after five o'clock.
So you, you are operating the business.
Hmm.
Mr. Heiser owns the business.
Yeah, and, and I'm not an active employee now. But I'm there three, four times a week till they kick me out.
Yeah.
So this, Mr. Heiser runs it with my son and the two other employees. We used to have six employees, we're down to three.
Point.
Can I ask a couple of questions then, Mr. Howko?
Thanks.
Um, what year did the business start at this location?
Uh, we bought the business in, the property from Lenny Payne in ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine. And we started, um, uh, pretty well from, from day one, making products for failures. Uh, we started out just making little shoeing boxes and that's the thing, he puts his goals in and moves around from station to station of horse to horse.
So since ninety-nine, have you had a good business lessons as you should have each year? So you've done what the county's asked you to do as far as a business license?
Yes, oh, absolutely, absolutely. We've got business license ever since day one. Um, yes. And I, I, uh, I would say, if I may, was there another question?
No, those were my two questions.
We, we've been, um, I'm, I'm not trying to make.
I do have one more question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I understand that you are assembling things here and you ship things out. How do you ship things out? Are you using big trucks, UPS trucks? I understand there's.
Most?
I'm familiar with Lumber Company Road, I'm a local, I've always been here, I have questions.
Okay. Um, we, uh, when we were manufacturing, we had trucks coming in all the time delivering raw materials for us to put together. Everything now, maybe once a month, we get a, a shipment of materials in from our supplier in, uh, Peachtree City. And they will usually bring in, it's not a tractor trailer. They'll usually bring in a, what I call a state body truck, maybe a thirty-foot box truck bringing in the materials. We unload them, bring them inside and put them together.
So honestly, for your business, that was for you, how long has it been since you've had a tractor trailer on Lumber Company Road that was there for your business?
Oh, probably, um, I think we had to, um, we had to get some material in for Tom at Cackle Town Welding. Uh, he asked us to get some aluminum in for him, especially because we have a little bit better buying power. And so I think there was a truck in there a week or two ago. I think they delivered it early last week. But on a regular basis, where, where we might have a truck coming in to deliver, uh, uh, maybe it was as much as once a week. Now it's once a month, a tractor trailer might come in there. It's not our primary business anymore. Um, we, we'll take the stuff to the UPS store. I'll, and occasionally we'll have a truck come in and it could be a tractor trailer and pick up materials, but we're not shipping, um, uh, large assembled units out in tractor trailers.
Okay. I was just trying to get some info from the business side of things.
I, I'd say it's, it's considerably less, better than fifty percent less traffic on there.
Thank you. Mr. Heiser, come forward, please.
I'll just. I wanna get. We want to see you get up and move. I'll add a little bit to that. The last shipment that we had out that was, um, was on a fifth wheel. So it was a pickup truck that pulled a fifth wheel. We do have deliveries that come by with semis, but for the last part that we shipped out to Colorado, I think there was four or five tons on there, they were on a, a fifth wheel. It was a pickup truck with a fifth wheel. And that's primarily what we do is LTL, almost all LTL.
So now that you're the current owner of the business and I understand Mr. Howko is advising and saying now, going forward, what is your expected shipping?
You know, really, I don't see that we're gonna change a whole lot. I mean, from what they've been doing and what we're gonna do, there's not a whole lot there. And if we do expand, I've got other operations around the United States, I can ship that too. Um, I've got a business right now in Toledo, Ohio, that we can move it to Toledo, Ohio. Some of it, if we get to the point where we need to expand, I don't, I don't really see that at the moment. It's, it's not that big of a, the market's not that big.
So going forward, you're not looking to have big trucks in your location constantly?
No, you can't do it. Number one, it's a gravel driveway and it's, it's tough enough for me to get out of there some days in my pickup truck, to be real honest with you.
Oh, that's what I was.
I live in Gwinnett, so I know about traffic, but anyway.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thanks.
So, uh, Charles, here's the situation we've got, did I see? Well, we've got, we've got a business that has a license that's been able to operate for all this period of time. And I was grandfathered, the right term's been, uh, for what it is today, you know, how it's operating today. And so the question before us then is, uh, to take the property and bring it into compliance in terms of the separation between the residential courts and the mobile homes and sites that the business.
Watch them.
But boil it down.
Pretty much. Al- also keep in mind, any of this grandfather cannot be expanded.
Pretty much. Al- also keep in mind, any neighbor's grandfather cannot be expanded. So.
What it is, what it is.
I'm sorry?
I said it is what it is.
No, I put it's me.
So really only part of the land will be this new, um, rural business and the other part will remain?
Just staff recommendation.
Okay, uh, okay, so the one, uh, one and a half acres of it will remain rural residential?
Yes, the top portion.
We're fine, let's go.
Make it less complicated that you have, you have three rail mobile homes on the property. So with those two, net upper portion, that was just our recommendation. Have that remain core residential.
So you have no expansion? Alright. Do you have a motion?
I would like to see a noise barrier clear up around the business as a condition. He was like, what's the, what's the?
We'd have to define whatever, the.
Oh, why does it? I, I, well, this is from, I'm not familiar with this new, um.
This all goes back.
Rural business now that we're talking about that business.
Mr. Chairman, ask me. Yes. Your name is?
I'm sorry, after the public hearing is closed, it needs to be a question only. So we don't need to look it up for specific comments I listed. So if y'all have a specific comment, question to ask about it, it's a general comment side, I'm, I love to bring it up to your grandparents.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question?
No, I did, when I ask a question, I mean a question from them too, they're.
Okay.
I was sorry.
So go ahead.
Yes. So. You'd like your business to be quiet?
Yes.
So Charles, we've got a grandfather here. And it's the first time that these folks have had the chance to come before this urge to express their concern about noise. Unless it is, was determined to be a public nuisance, I don't know how we can address that particular question.
So zoning conditions are that they're intended to ameliorate the effect a zoning action will have on the community, on adjacent properties and things of that nature. So the fact that the county does not have noise ordinance doesn't preclude you from imposing conditions that are meant to ameliorate the effect of whatever the zoning will be. And so, for that reason, that's why I said on the last one that I could look at zoning conditions for you dealing with decibels. So if there is a particular way that you want to approach dealing with noise on this, the fact that a private cause of action may or may not exist for an adjacent property owner against the business doesn't change or affect your ability as the planning commission regiment, a zoning condition that could ultimately be imposed by the board of commissioners. Whether that's by, you know, requiring some sort of a barrier, um, it's, it's no different than for aesthetic purposes um, or for, you know, landscaping purposes, requiring a fifty-foot zoning buffer to separate a commercial property from a residential. Uh, and you can make the same thing here. Um, I would have trouble just drafting one off the cuff. I've never done like on a zoning, uh, barrier, um, like what GDOT does on highlights that I'll prefer to, I chose them.
I would recommend, if I can give my two cents, that you request that we exhaust our buffer ordinance that we have in place. I know there's natural vegetation that's in the property now, but to see if there's a way to increase uh, the density of the buffer, we have you, but you know, if y'all want us to look into that, because we do have a buffer, bumper.
Which would be, uh, trees and shrubs and which take time to grow.
Yes.
Check with this town.
But is that your pleasure? You know, what, what, what would you recommend to the board commissioners, um, as, as far as, you know, that issue?
Is, is the building such that the buffer can be addressed the way you've suggested?
Well, it can. Let's get that, that would, that would be, uh, according to what you all would request, um, as part of your recommendation to the board commissioners. And of course, staff, what we can to, to see we can, uh, help make that a possibility. To say, if, if, should that be an additional, uh, condition.
Yeah, thank you, Charles.
Mr. Chairman, I would propose a motion and put my, my question.
We did nothing, they can continue operating indefinitely, just like they are right here.
Wait, let's say that one more time.
If we did nothing on, if we took no action, we're fine, let's put it down. They can still continue to operate.
It's still a grandfather business.
The last one, six years.
Yes. Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
To your point though, if the zoning law changes, it gives you more ability to regulate some of the things that we talked about.
Yes. It's. But does it allow for more businesses? If they sell. The grandfather status cannot be expanded. But if you change it to zoning for certain commercial businesses, then it's zoning for that. Wonder if anybody can come in and buy that.
It's not the opportunities that are up to delay, like just right.
Alright, I think we're about to have a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I propose a motion that we, we should approve with the investigation of the county going forward, how it's, uh, uh, applying a buffer ordinance are to address the noise mitigation a little bit.
So in addition to the condition.
In addition to the condition, add the condition of investigation by the, by the board of commissioners, commissioners uh, regarding the buff, our buffer ordinance, the county's buffer ordinance.
So it sounds like you're saying that you're, rather than proposing the actual condition, just recommending to the board of commissioners to consider adding a condition? Is that, is that what you're getting at?
Correct.
You would make them do that? And so that's okay. If, yeah, the alternative would be to postpone to allow Charles to do it and bring it back to you. But you're suggesting just make a motion to approve with the three conditions and further recommending to the board of commissioners that they impose in landscaping buffer standards that the board of commissioners is. Are y'all clear on the motion?
So a motion, is there a second? There are motion and a second. Further discussion? All those is in favor, please raise your right hand. In hands. Alright. Thank you all for taking, saving your life. But it's good things that come out of it. I think that the owners understand that, um, we all need to work together, so I want to do good neighbors. I will now call for, uh, uh, the leading supporter of public comment. Oh, if you say something, let us know what that is. General, in general, how about this? Commission, come. Is there a motion to adjourn? Was he to adjourn? Second.
Second.
In favor?